Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our pre-meeting for December 12, 2022. Go around and see. I had a, only thing I had last week that you haven't heard about was a luncheon with the mayors in the Adams County side, because we do the, I do it with both sides of the world. This was the Adams County side, mayors and RTD people, just to listen what all's going on. And we got on the subject of, we'll probably hear about some of it tonight with the policy stuff going to be happening with the legislation and things coming down from the governor's office around laws around housing and mandates and different things. So we talked about that, but otherwise, we just laughed a lot and caught up with each other. So, Sarah, what did you have?
We had the Dr. Cog work session to discuss housing and how Dr. Cog could be involved in supporting communities. And overall, the overall sentiment was that Dr. Cog should help get information, help streamline funding opportunities, be again, a convener for communities to be able to identify opportunities for housing. There were interesting comments from other communities that, you know, with this Proposition 123 coming in, which is funneling funds, about $300 million into an affordable housing fund, some of the rulemaking is, I want to now do a list at the moment as to what will be required for cities to participate. One of the things that I think is a little bit onerous and other cities do too, is the 90-day approval for affordable projects. And so there needs to be, and there's also a commitment to increase your affordable housing stock by 3% annually for three years. And there are other elements too, that really do need to be fleshed out. And some of the comments from other communities were that, you know, there's a bit of a disconnect between cities and how we work and what the legislators are putting together. And they, I think that was also, could Dr. Cog help in facilitating better conversations around statewide legisla-, you know, because it may be difficult for a lot of communities to participate in getting this funding. More to come, but they were just taking a lot of comments and notes from folks, and then they would come back to us on a proposal, what they can do.
Control is going to be the key.
That was a strong sentiment from pretty much everybody. Everybody, of course, is, you know, there are a lot of people hiring housing managers and getting themselves ready, and they know it's an issue, affordable housing or lack thereof is an issue, and everyone's working, almost every city it sounds like is, and still trying to figure out what success looks like and how to actually do it.
Counselor Baker?
I had the charming morning with the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, community Unfortunately, I think I have some very bad news for us. At the meeting, I don't think our participation in the roundtable is really valued at all. It is not even appreciated, okay? All they want from us is $12,000 so they can buy a consultant. And they were moving straight ahead on buying the consultant. If you remember last time, I really reported that, when we looked at putting out an RFP, and I pointed out that on the RFP, we were considering, it said, potential issues. I said, don't we have to have specific things to have an RFP? So then it was changed to an RFQ, which is a request for really qualifications. So we pick a consultant that would then better define the issues that we felt we needed to do. But it turns out that Jefferson County doesn't want to do that, because it has to be purchased through Jefferson County. So it goes back to an RFP. So they took that list and just scratched off the word really potential, and that became de facto the issues. I don't think they're well-defined at all. I asked, how is this going to move the process ahead? And we got into some specific examples. I guess early in the lifetime of this group, there had been a study which was funded by really Superior in Lewisville. And in the study, they cited specific actions that could be requested. Like one of the actions they talked about was, as the airplanes take wing and then climb out of the airport, it could be what's allowed, turn out early. So they make a turn, instead of going the full distance of the climb out, they turn out early to go a different way, with the advantage being that this would then really lessen the noise for the people farther down the climb-out path. And so I questioned, so why don't we ask the FAA if we can do that? They didn't want to do that. They want to get this consultant. And yet I was unable to find any value from having this consultant. More disturbing, as we moved later on in the meetings, I have the agenda here, and these can be watched online too, they're actually published, so you can watch them just like our meetings. Later on, well, the representative out of Lewisville, the alternate, I seen Most, because the regular guy was not there. As we were going down the agenda, on Agenda Item 5, it said, "Annual Work Program Update." And during this time, Ms. Most asked if we could make a new app for better noise reporting. And from my point of view, she was really bullied. That was called inappropriate, even though on Item 7H, it says, and 7, and 7 is future items agenda, 7H says, "Future Item Agenda," and H is, I mean, the development of an app for noise complaints. So she was completely appropriate in my point of view, and yet she was bullied into doing We then went on about the consultant and the $100,000. And I once again re-enterated that our primary purpose was there to support our sister cities in any kinds of requests to the FAA. But we were not in favor of spending a lot of money on something that wasn't going to move the matter forward. I felt in some ways I was attempting to be bullied too. So what I'm bringing to our council is that, do we want to participate in this, especially if they're dead set on hiring this consultant for $100,000, and then they would expect us to bear an equal portion of it?
Just remember, there you are, Mad Hatter. This year, isn't it 3,000? Or do I have that in memory wrong?
Ask Teresa.
Yeah. For this, that was.
Please come forward, Teresa. Thank you.
Policy and Budget Coordinator. Yes, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it is 3, and then, or 3,600, I believe, and then it does increase for next year's dues.
But that is until June of 2023.
Correct. That's when they'll be due.
Right. So, and I was on until between 9:30, 9:45, Mr. Mack had a doctor's appointment today, so I didn't hear all of that. I will go back and listen to everything, but my concern is, we just need to, we need to, I believe, play this out through June. You don't have to make the decision until that point whether we're going to re-up for another year. I don't think it's healthy for us to use that every meeting, they're sick of hearing that, they either want us in or they want us out. They're getting frustrated from the little bit I did hear. We just can't use that as a whipping stone. We're there, we want to participate, we can share our frustration, as we did about what is that group doing, and I heard others share, but we're just back in, what, two meetings now since we had?
Well, since September.
So, I don't know, I'll let other speakers speak, but that's sort of where I'm at from listening.
Can I get a better idea of, or maybe, do you, have they passed around the scope of work?
Well, it was the same list from the previous agenda. I do not have a copy of that, but there are some very vague kinds of things, so I really don't know what they want the scope of work. My concern is that if they hire this guy in March, they're, they're hiring on the assumption they're going to have the funds, and if we're not going to participate, I think it's just fair of us to tell them that at the beginning. That is the only reason I brought it up again, is that they were dead set on spending this money, and I thought we had made it clear to them that we weren't ready to spend that kind of money without the requests we had made, and we've not gotten anywhere on those requests.
Well, and there's no guarantee where any of, or all of those cities will be in June. So if they take that risk on, they have to address that when that happens.
It would be helpful to know what ultimately will be studied in that, so if we can see if that's something that we feel would actually make some progress with the group.
I am sure that, I'm sure that any of the RFP, you can get a copy of.
Yeah, I'm imagining. So that would be helpful to see what's being proposed to be analyzed and maybe take it step by step, and that's a key indicator for us.
Are they putting the RFQ out through the airport or through the?
No, no, it has to be through Jefferson County.
Though we went there, we could probably see the advertisement.
Well, I don't think they've put it out yet.
But when they do?
Yes. We can get a copy of it. But it's public record.
I think it'd be more than proposal, because if you're saying the RFP is pretty nebulous in terms of the tasks, and that the person who would propose, the groups that would propose on it would be articulating what they would do, and that's what I think we would want to look at.
Any other thoughts? Did I see Rich, your hand? Is everybody okay to stick with it?
Right out the storm, see what happens.
Okay. You okay with that? You're in the midst of the storm.
Yeah, and I did not like what I considered to be the bullying.
I will try my best to be at the next one. I don't know what his doctor's appointment is for next time.
Well, they've also said they could only do the second Monday in the day, or the fourth Monday in the day, that we decide on the second Monday in the day.
Okay. Ms. Lindsay?
Slower week this week. I went to the craft fair in historic Westminster on Saturday, and it was a really nice turnout. It was, the ladies at the Creative Corner did a really great job of getting that full and keeping Bev's, Bev Capra's memory alive through that, so it was a great turnout.
Yesterday, on my memories on Facebook, it was interviewing Bev last year. Mr. Seymour?
Got to stand around the fire pits at the food truck party, so thank our fire department for keeping us warm, and, you know, no one caught fire, so that's an advantage.
I almost did.
Yeah, they had a little contest to see if the bonfire could get bigger, so, but, you know, the heat radiated halfway across the street, so that was nice. But that was a nice, nice evening, chilly, it just happens to be that night, it's, now we know, hey, it's going to be cold that night. Yeah, it was great, it was great to be there, so otherwise, it's a holiday slow week.
Questions for tonight's meeting? Does anybody have anything? See anything pop through, but I haven't seen my mail since one. We'll see everybody at the Dia's at seven.
If you could.
the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting of December 12th, 2022. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Demat.
Present.
Counselor Emmons.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Counselor Nermella.
Here.
And Counselor Seymour.
Here.
I'd just like to remind everybody tonight, disruptions from the crowd are prohibited. Threats and intimidation are prohibited during the council meeting. Council members show endeavor to refrain from electronic communications on subjects at the meeting. And also, if anybody has anything to say in the audience, please go out into the hallway because it is disruptive as we're trying to conduct our meeting. That brings us to consideration of minutes of the preceding meeting. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the November 28th, 2022 meeting as presented.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve the minutes of November 28th, 2022. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Or it's a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public comment. Do we have people signed up?
I have nobody who has signed up.
And no voicemails or anything. Is there anybody that forgot to sign up that wants to speak? Seeing none, that brings us to pub, to city managers report. Mr. Frytag.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, counselors, ladies and gentlemen in attendance and anybody watching online tonight. So wanted to provide a couple of updates from the city. So first of all, the city library services system is sponsoring One Book Westminster. And so sharing a book with certainly our council tonight and with our community. It will launch in January of 2023 to unite community members who shared experiences of reading the same book. The book is entitled Woman of Light, and we're excited to have the opportunity to read that. If you'd like to learn more about that opportunity, you can visit that website. It's our city website slash one book. So something to do during those cold winter months. Also, just a quick update on the Holt's Claw Homestead. If you remember, that property was in disrepair, was becoming a nuisance, and some problems had occurred there. Staff worked with the property owner to clean up the debris and not only from the buildings and the structures, but also some of the vegetation that was on site. If you drive by there, you'll see that there are still large debris piles from the, from the trees and shrubs and things like that. And we're working with the property owner to remove that, but that is going to take some time. And so I would just ask everybody in the community to be patient. So working on that. Next slide. Can we get the next slide, please? There we go. Thank you. So some west, westy winds. First of all, the Westminster Police have been participating in COPS, fighting cancer. So our officers joined the Denver Metro area colleagues in a parade for the children at the Denver Children's Hospital. Since 2002, the event has visited over 8,000 sick children and donated thousands of toys and gift cards to patients. And so we want to say thanks to our Westminster Police Department for continuing to participate in that event. What a great cause. The other thing I'd like to do is introduce our new library services manager. She's in attendance this evening. I'd ask her to stand up. Amy Rhoda has joined the city as of Monday, December 5th. We're glad to have you join the city team. And she most recently served as the library director for the Community Library Network of Northern Idaho. So Amy, welcome.
Welcome.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't also say thank you to Vera Closer. Vera, could you stand up, please? We just wanted to recognize her. She served as our interim library services manager for these past many months. And we just want to say thanks for holding down the fort. Now you can do, go back to doing what you had done previously, and I know that you enjoyed that. So, yeah, thank you so much. And then I just wanted to let the community know about the Sustainability Office has some energy efficiency gifts that are available. So there are nine, they've handed out so far 90 complimentary LED lighting kits that are valued at about $100 each, and then 100 vouchers for Excel Energy Home Energy Squad Visit. So they'll come out and do an assessment on your home, which is pretty cool. And so I encourage folks to get in touch with the Sustainability Office should they have any follow-on questions. A great initiative. Next slide. Some things to know, Fire Department Holiday Charity Drive that continues through December 16th. Donations of food, toys, clothes may be dropped off at participating city facilities, community locations, donations, support Have a Heart Project, Jeffco Foster Care, Santa COPS, and Fish Food Bank of Westminster. Inclusivity Board is meeting Wednesday, December 14th. That's this week from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. It's a virtual meeting. Santa on the Plaza is this weekend, Saturday, December 17th, from 5:00 to 7:00, and that's hosted by Westminster Rotary. Our next city council meeting is Monday, December 19th at 6:30 p.m. here in city council chambers. And oh my goodness, how did that get in there? Army beat Navy this weekend. For those that may not be paying attention, 20 to 17 in double overtime. So go Army, beat Navy. Next slide. And then the other thing that I wanted to share with everybody is, is that we have made an offer, and it's been accepted for our new Human Resources Department Director. His name is Davy Godfrey. He's pictured in the lower right corner. But he, for the past seven years, has served as the Human Resources and Risk Management Director for the City of Marietta, Georgia. Prior to his service in Marietta, he served in the United States Army for 20 years, both active and reserve components, has a human resources and logistics background. He does hold a master's degree in human resources management from Webster and a bachelor of science degree in recreation administration from Jacksonville State. And so we're excited to get Davy on board. His first day of work with the city will be February 13th. So excited about that. Next slide. And as always, I encourage folks to give us a call here at the city. You can contact us. We want to be accessible. We certainly want to be responsive, transparent, and accountable for the work that we do. If you want to contact my office, you can do that at 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfraytag@cityofwestminster.us. You can follow us on Facebook, like us on, excuse me, follow us on Twitter, like us on Facebook. Check us out on Instagram and connect with us on Nextdoor. So, next slide, please. And there are no information items this evening. So any questions? That's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you. That brings us to council comments. Seeing none, we will move. Go ahead. George Haborca. George Haborca is a former mayor that I had the pleasure of knowing and met him many times at their graduations because he and Nancy Iau always went to those. He was a former teacher, principal. He, his, what I remember him for is his daughter who had twin twins. That was quite a stir in the city. He had a voice that, the first time he ever said hi to me, I thought, oh, he's a mean man. But he was just a big teddy bear. Anyway, he did pass. They had a service last week, I believe it was, and his wife had passed, I think in 2015. Jackie was, she was the life of the couple. She was a great lady. Got to meet her and know her. But another loss for us, we have lost several great leaders this year that have shaped this city. So we do think of all of them and thank them all for all their, their work and dedication. He had over 20 years with Westminster. Anything else under council comments? That brings us to the consent agenda. Counselor, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt the consent agenda items 8A through 8C.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt items 8A through C. Is there any further questions? Roll call.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to resolution number 40. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 40, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Westminster and the Colorado Department of Transportation to abandon a portion of Sheridan Boulevard to the City of Westminster.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution number 40. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to resolution number 41. Counselor Seymour?
I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 41 on first reading, accepting a portion of Sheridan Boulevard from the Colorado Department of Transportation as the City of Westminster public right of way. Excuse me, is that 41 or 62?
I skipped, sorry.
See, I was just taking your lead. Okay.
Mayor Protem grabbed. This new system, I'm not used to yet.
Okay, I'll correct that to Counselor Bill Number 62.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill 62. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Now resolution 41. Counselor Emmons?
Move to adopt resolution number 41, approving planning commission bylaws and rules of procedure updated November 8th, 2022.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass or adopt resolution 41. Are there any further questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to resolution 43. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 42, establishing the City of Westminster 2023 Legislative Policy Statement.
I don't know which one of you.
Second.
Counselor Seymour? It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution. Didn't we just use 42? It's 43. Okay.
It was Counselors Bill 62 and then resolution 40 and 41. So now we're on 42.
All right. All of these blue thing, purple, I think it's the same thing. So like I said, not used to it yet. Go ahead.
I think I read that. Do we have a second?
Yes. Seymour?
Okay, so real quick, I just wanted to thank staff for all the work they've put into our legislative policy over the last couple of months, as well as going through the process with the mayor and I of looking at who we're using for lobbying. And Ms. Hatwood is staying with us. And so, you know, there's been a lot of work, and I wanted to make sure that I point that out because I know that we have a lot of asks, and you guys have done really well, and I'm excited to see the new policies, and I think they'll work well for us.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to resolution 43. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 43, establishing the City of Westminster 2023 Lobbying Protocols.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 43. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 43, establishing the City of Westminster 2023 Lobbying Protocols.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 43, establishing the City of Westminster 2023 Lobbying Protocols.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt items 8A through C. Is there any further questions?
Roll call.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to resolution number 41. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 41, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Westminster and the Colorado Department of Transportation to abandon a portion of Sheridan Boulevard to the City of Westminster.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass resolution number 41. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to resolution number 41. Counselor Seymour?
I move to pass Counselors Bill Number 41 on first reading, accepting a portion of Sheridan Boulevard from the Colorado Department of Transportation as the City of Westminster public right of way. Excuse me, is that 41 or 62?
I skipped, sorry.
See, I was just taking your lead. Okay.
Mayor Protem grabbed. This new system, I'm not used to yet.
Okay, I'll correct that to Counselor Bill Number 62.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors Bill 62. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Now resolution 41. Counselor Emmons?
Move to adopt resolution number 41, approving planning commission bylaws and rules of procedure updated November 8th, 2022.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass or adopt resolution 41. Are there any further questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to resolution 43. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 42, establishing the City of Westminster 2023 Legislative Policy Statement.
I don't know which one of you.
Second.
Counselor Seymour? It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution. Didn't we just do 42? It's 43. Okay.
It was Counselors Bill 62 and then resolution 40 and 41. So now we're on 42.
All right. All of these blue thing, purple, I think it's the same thing. So like I said, not used to it yet. Go ahead.
I think I read that. Do we have a second?
Yes. Seymour?
Okay, so real quick, I just wanted to thank staff for all the work they've put into our legislative policy over the last couple of months, as well as going through the process with the mayor and I of looking at who we're using for lobbying. And Ms. Hatwood is staying with us. And so, you know, there's been a lot of work, and I wanted to make sure that I point that out because I know that we have a lot of asks, and you guys have done really well, and I'm excited to see the new policies, and I think they'll work well for us.
Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to resolution 43. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 43, establishing the City of Westminster 2023 Lobbying Protocols.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 43. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat? Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10D, negotiated rates for 2023 library material purchase. Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest will best be served by utilizing negotiated rates for the purchase of library materials, electronic resources, and services. materials, electronic resources, and services for the Westminster Public Library for a grand total not to exceed $950,000 for 2023 from the following vendors. Baker &amp; Taylor, not to exceed $300,000. Colorado Library Consortium, not to exceed $100,000. Midwest Tape, not to exceed $150,000. OneDrive Inc., not to exceed $300,000. And Sirius Dynix, not to exceed $100,000.
Counselor Emmons?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10D. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Azadi?
Just a quick question. These are, are there savings associated with this from previous years?
But they are comparable to the rates we had previously. And they're, they're negotiated through the Click Colorado Library Consortium so that we do have a lower rate and they negotiate the rates for all the neighboring libraries as well.
So is it more of a cost avoidance where, because, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10. Counselor Emmons?
I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest would be best served by authorizing a sole source contract with Central Square Technologies LLC for the annual licenses, maintenance, updates, and upgrades to the city's electronic permitting system in an amount not to exceed $90,498 for 2023 with the option of four one-year renewals with an annual 5% adjustment not to exceed a total contract value of $95,023 in 2024, $99,775 in 2025, $104,763 in 2026, and $110,001 in 2027.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass couns, or pass item 10E. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat? Counsel, I'm sorry, can you say that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10F. Counselor Emmons?
I move to authorize the reallocation of $20,625 from the water project savings account into the 112th Avenue and Federal Boulevard Water Main Break Capital Improvement Project amount, account.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10F. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Baker?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest will best, will be best served by authorizing the city manager to execute a sole source contract amendment with Murray Smith Incorporated, recently purchased by Consor to provide construction management services for the repair of the water main break located near the intersection of 112th Avenue and Federal Boulevard in the amount of $18,750 and authorize a contingency in the amount of $1,875 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $20,625, bringing the total authorized expenditure with this firm from the previously authorized amount of $88,588 to $109,213.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve item 10F, Part II. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
That brings us to item 10G, authorize special legal services for public finance council. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to sign a contract for legal services with Butler Snow LLP to represent the city on public finance matters and the review of consolidated service plan for Uplands Metropolitan Districts Numbers 1 and 2.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass item 10G. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to update council that the Finance Department did receive a check reimbursing us for the costs that are associated with this contract. So Butler Snow Services were limited in scope to review of a consolidated service plan. And so in the end, there will not be a cost to the city to receive the reimbursement.
That's good news. Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Counselor Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Baker?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Demat?
Yes.
And Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote.
Thank you. And that's it for this part of the meeting. Do we have reason for executive session later?
Yes, Mayor. There is an executive session that's proposed for the discussion of a personnel matter. A discussion of the annual review process specific to the city manager, city attorney, and presiding judge pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C1 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024F1.
And this will happen after we have a presentation about our courthouse and then we'll go into executive session. I will pull council, make sure you want to go into executive session. Counselor Baker? Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Emmons?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Counselor, um, Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Anything else we need before we adjourn?
Nothing. Thank you.
We are adjourned and we'll go into our post meeting.
Okay, we are ready to go for post meeting and.
Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem Councilors, ladies and gentlemen, we're here tonight to talk about the future of the Westminster Municipal Court Building. And what you're going to hear is a presentation tonight that gives you the why do we need to do something? And then what's the proposal moving forward? Really three options on the table, you can do nothing and keep what you got. You can build something new, which certainly has pros and cons. Or you can conduct renovations of the existing facility, which, you know, again, has pros and cons. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Chris Lindsay. He's our General Services Director and has oversight of that facility. So Chris, please go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I could do some introductions to start things off. We have a pretty extensive team internally and externally that's been working on this project. So your municipal board, Judge Jason Lontine, Police Chief Norm Hobart, Larry Dorr, Chief Financial Officer and Deputy City Manager, Dana Kestner, Construction Project Specialist, Brian Grusowski, our Facilities Manager. And last but not least, Wells Squire, he's a Principal at Anderson Hollis Architects. And if you could give us a brief, a brief bio of your work, I would appreciate it.
Sure, sure. Thank you, Chris. My name is Wells Squire. As Chris has said, I'm a second generation owner of Anderson Hollis Architects with my business partner. We're a 32-year-old firm, as I mentioned, in our second year or second generation of ownership. We've been based since inception in Golden, Colorado, and we do nothing but civic work. So in the public sector, we don't do private sector work or housing or that type of thing. It's purely focused on civic, meaningful, community-oriented projects, courthouses, libraries, municipal office buildings, that's our specialty, along with historic preservation and adaptive reuse of existing structures. So that's sort of how we were founded. We love existing buildings, but we, we like to consider, you know, where to use old buildings. And sometimes we have to look at what they can give us. So we'll talk more about that tonight.
Thanks, Wells. So this evening, we're here to talk to you about a study that was kicked off in January of this year. It follows up a study that was, that was completed in 2016 that looked at multiple new build options. Just to, just to give you a cost estimate, the 2016 study cost the city $50,000. The 2022 study cost the city $75,000. The study this year was well over 250 hours, a lot of, a lot of work by a number of folks associated with Anderson Hollis Architects. And we'll get into a little bit more of that as we move forward. If I could go to the next slide, please. So the, the objective tonight is one, to share information. So you all understand the current state of and can discuss the future of the existing municipal court building. That's pictured on the right. And then staff's recommendation for you this evening is to make a financial decision to design a new municipal court building and have you direct staff to return with a financing strategy to build that court building. We'll circle back around to this recommendation at the end of the presentation to allow you to ask questions and discuss. I also want to highlight from your strategic plan focus objective 5.3C, develop recommendations and an associated action plan for addressing deferred maintenance on infrastructure, roads, facilities and equipment throughout the city. So we've been working on this under that strategic plan focused objective. Next slide, please. So I mentioned the 2016 study. That's just a bit of the history of the municipal court building and what is now, what is currently the municipal court building. So you'll see on the screen, but let me describe to you just to orient you. North is up, down is south here, the round area at the very bottom. That's what everyone knows as the round room. And much of the building was constructed originally in 1961. That's south portion. The northwest portion, the purple color was constructed in 1972. The police building on the right-hand side, 1961. And then a couple of different renovations took place in 1974. And ultimately in 1991, remodeled it allowed us to locate the municipal court in this facility. When we created that security vestibule in the second courtroom that's in the orange color. Really, you know, three buildings that have been combined into one. And if you walk through the building, you can actually see, especially in the smaller courtroom, the walls inside match the walls on the exterior of the building because they were once exterior walls of, of the building. That leads to a bit of discussion around the limitation of the physical building itself and really the construction type. And I'd like Wells to describe the construction type and some of the concerns with renovating the building.
Sure, thank you, Chris. So again, we see this diagram. It's important to understand how this campus sort of evolved over time with the independent two structures first, City Hall and Police Building, I believe circa 1961, purpose-built for those uses. And I think it was 1972 or so that the municipal addition came in, which is kind of that addition to the top left of this diagram. And then over time, it was filled in. And the original construction of these buildings is essentially precast concrete walls and precast roof. So it's, it's a cost-effective, strong system as long as you don't try to manipulate the windows in the building because you're limited somewhat structurally because of the precast nature of the material. And also to creating new large openings in these walls because they were never designed for that. They were intended to be load-bearing perimeter walls that suffered from, at the time, no energy code like we do today. So basically, we have solid concrete walls, structural with, with a limited amount of R-value resistance for the exterior walls, so little efficiency of the building. But the other thing is when you think about a new courthouse, and our charge really in this most recent study was to look at this existing facility and explore what additions and alterations we could propose for this building to really bring it to 21st century judicial standards. And from the lens of safety, accessibility and operational efficiency. And what's important to understand, because again, this, this study started with a space needs study where we understood kind of current needs from a, from a support standpoint for each of the departments that are in this building. When you, when you start to think about a courthouse, there's very specific adjacencies and organization and proportions of space that are necessary to meet current standards. But construction and the, the makeup of these existing walls as structural walls in, in the configuration you can see actually create somewhat of barriers or limitations for us to do the reorganization we need to do to bring in the additional space necessary and then the opportunity to connect circulation to make it all work. So really, that's the takeaway from this diagram is, is as Chris said, sort of the structural constraints of this structure when you consider holistically, how do we improve the structure from a program and function standpoint and an operational standpoint? So that's the gist.
We've also mentioned future capital improvement projects at the building. Our Facilities Division has done a great job maintaining and keeping everything running at the building. That said, a number of, a number of capital items are soon up for replacement with the building. These include the HVAC, roof and electrical. And some of these upgrades will require ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act and accessibility upgrades as well, which means there's little to no room for us to have a do-nothing option here. Next slide, please. Want to talk briefly about security, security at the site. And Judge and Chief, do you want to, do you want to jump into this?
Sure, thanks, Chris. So Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Counsel, thank you for the opportunity to come in tonight and share the court's perspective on, on some of the issues that we've been discussing as it relates to the courthouse. And from the court's perspective, one of the most important issues that we're facing has to do with security limitations in the current facility. And as a court, our top priority is to make sure that we're providing excellent service to the community. And fundamental to that is our ability to do it safely and securely. Just a little bit of background about our municipal court. We really face the exact same security issues that you would hear about in any state district or county court. The individuals that come through our courtroom as defendants are charged with anything from domestic violence battery, harassment, assaults, there's non-domestic violence cases, violation of protection order, thefts, really you name it. But also a lot of those individuals have other matters besides their municipal cases. And so we see a lot of individuals that have cases pending in state district, sometimes felony courts. It's not unusual to have individuals in the courthouse that have pending felony matters, up to and including homicide. And so just because someone is cited with a municipal case does not mean that they necessarily don't have other safety risks that, that are associated with other matters that they have pending. At our courthouse, we've had individuals attempt to escape custody. We've had witness intimidation occur. We've had individuals get aggressive with staff and other individuals in the courthouse. And we've had threats against the courthouse itself in the time that I've been with the city. Personally, I know other judges, district attorneys, defense counsel that have had threats against themselves based off of the work that they do in municipal court and in other courts. So I say all that in the context that I really believe that we need to remain vigilant when it comes to security issues with the court and that the current facility, well, that, that, that the standards and best practices have come a long way since when our current facility was built. And we're facing a lot of those limitations now. And as we were exploring the different options with the courthouse, we were finding that a lot of those limitations remained regardless of how we tried to rearrange within the building because of a lot of the structural limitations that Wells was addressing. In terms of those best practices, there's a few on the slide here I just wanted to touch on. And the first is adjacencies. And so in a, in a modern courthouse, you would expect that certain organizations are connected close in space so that they can interact safely. And we'll talk a little bit about front of house and back of house in a bit. But we're finding that, that's really not the case in, in our courthouse. There's the need to cross public areas to do routine court business. Probation is on its own, really if a probation officer wants to do anything, they have to leave probation, go into the public area. In terms of points of entry, again, in a modern courthouse and best practices, you'd expect those areas to be quote unquote hardened. And in our courthouse, there are lots of areas, particularly around the exterior, where there are soft points of access to the building. All of the offices are on the ground level with many with windows that face outward onto publicly accessible areas. And that includes the judge's chambers, prosecutor's offices, victim services. All of those areas can be accessed directly from public areas outside with, with no barrier. And again, that's, has to do really with the structure and layout of the building. A couple of just really unique, I suppose, aspects about our courthouse have to do with the common spaces and the separate paths of travel. The way our courthouse is designed, there's one, for instance, public restroom on, on the public side. And because of space limitations, that one restroom is used by jurors, defendants, witnesses, victims, attorneys that are in the courthouse. And it creates a very real situation for unsafe and improper contact. You can imagine if you're a juror, a jury trial, and during a recess, you need to go use the restroom and you're shoulder to shoulder with the individual that, that's on trial or their attorney. It creates, whether or not in any one case it happens, it certainly creates the opportunity for improper conduct and a, a level of service that we would want to improve for the individuals that, that are coming into our court. In terms of the, the separate path of travel for in custody defendants, I'll, I'll turn to Chief Hobart here in a moment. But from the court's perspective, again, the way the building is laid out, when there's an in custody defendant, whether they were remanded from the courthouse, they, they came into court, they had a warrant, the judge remanded them, or if they're brought into the building from the jail, there are two paths to get them into the courtrooms. One is through the jury room into the courtroom, which is not ideal for, for a number of reasons. Whether a jury is in session or not, we'll get to the space limitations and the fact that the jury room is also the only real non-public meeting area in the courthouse. So if there's a meeting going on, the in custody defendant, it's not uncommon. There's an interruption of the meeting, the individual goes through. The other option is for the in custody defendant to go into the back of house secure hallway, go by the judge's chambers, and that hallway directly accesses the secure clerk's area. So there is no safe, secure way to transport in custody defendants into the courtrooms and out of the courtrooms. And that's a major concern. As I said, we've had individuals that have, have tried to run, have tried to escape, and it, it really creates a dangerous situation for, for everyone in, in that scenario. But I want to pass it on to Chief Hobart as well for his perspective from the PD.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Councilors, thanks for the opportunity to give the PD's perspective on this tonight. Really, as it relates to the, the ingress of the building, when you come into the building, that security is provided by a private security company. Once you're in the building, a lot of that is really maintained by the police department. So we're in charge of prisoner safety, employee safety, the judge's safety, and then ultimately the public safety. As, as it relates to the safety of those in custody is probably our, our primary function down there. And we really run into issues as it relates to their safety and officer's safety when we're dealing with prisoner transports. Walking up and down the stairs, so the, the courtroom is all on the, on the main floor, if you will. And then down in the basement is where the holding cells are. It's from the, it's, you have to go up and downstairs. And it's not ideal, but when we have prisoner transports, there's a leather band that goes around their waist and then they're handcuffed in front. It's for more comfort. It's not as, it's not as debilitating as, as having your handcuffs behind your back. So we have them in front, but we don't have leg shackles on them, which we should have leg shackles on prisoners that are in custody. We're actually required by some of the federal statutes and some of the state statutes, depending on the prisoners that we have, to make sure that we have leg shackles on them. If they're not a federal prisoner, generally speaking, we don't have them on because it comes down to the city's liability. We have them going up and downstairs. They can't brace themselves if they fall. And it's also a tripping hazard when they have the leg shackles on. So for them, it's not ideal. So what we're doing to the officers is we're removing a, a safe piece of safety equipment now. And it becomes a, it could become a liability for the officers and their injuries. If you're gonna, if the person in custody decides to pick a fight, a stairwell is the best place to do it because you, you will automatically have high ground and the officer is already at the low ground. So for their safety, it's, it's not an ideal situation as far as that goes. Injuries can occur to both the officer and the, and the person that's in custody. Again, it creates a liability for the city. As the judge already alluded to, there's, there's very few ways in and out of the courtroom when we have a suspect in custody. And really, when the judge is there, he's, he's on the bench or he's, he's in a different courtroom and we're bringing a prisoner in the, in a secured area and we're obviously with them, but it's not ideal. We walk by the judge's chambers, we walk by the other judge's chambers. And what's in that office? You guys all have offices, I'm assuming you guys all have offices. But in those offices are family photos, photos of friends, all that type of stuff is there where it's not in the general public area for anybody to see, yet we're parading the detainee right past that office where they can get that visual, that type of stuff in there. Again, the judge alluded to it, we don't have a choice. We're mission-driven at that point in time when we have a detainee. They're going from the courtroom, they're going down to the holding cells. There's no stop, there's no pass and go. So from there, we have to go through limited areas. So we have walked into meetings, we have walked into jury rooms. And it is not ideal for anybody, especially if, if you are there, you're a victim of a crime, you're meeting with the victim advocate, you're meeting with the prosecuting attorney, and we're barging through because we're on that mission to get the person to the, to the holding cell. It is, it's not ideal. And again, it also creates barriers and problems for us when we encounter other people. See, the whole idea of prisoner transports is we're isolating people. And now we're, we're unisolating them, if you will. As it relates to other security concerns, I won't go into a deep dive on these because we're still using the building for quite a while, but you have exterior glass issues. You have other doorways, you have other windows that are all accessible to the public. They're not cordoned off, which creates issues, could potentially create issues for us as it relates to the detainees that we're dealing with. So again, not ideal. In, in our business, one of the things that we look for to minimize threats and minimize danger is either barriers or distance. As we're relating to, you know, to suspects, if, if we're, if, if they're going to be competitive and we want to put ourselves in a better position, we tell our officers to go behind a barrier, put a table between you, or create distance. In these courtrooms, if you've ever been into these courtrooms, there is no distance. There is no distance between the defendant and the judge, between the defendant and the jury, between the defendant and the victim. And there's, there's no way to create distance in the, in those rooms. And barriers are not really optional if you want to have meaningful, a meaningful court proceeding. So those are huge issues as it relates to safety and security as, as far as that goes. A couple of other things that I'll touch on as it relates to the prisoner piece of it. When we have somebody, it doesn't happen often, but when we have somebody in a wheelchair and they're in custody, there is one way in, and that is through the front doors where everybody else comes in. The only other option that we have is to bring them in the side door. And then we have to have three or four people carry the wheelchair up and down the stairs. Or we bring in a, a special pram for that type of stuff. Again, not ideal, and then you're talking injuries, potential injuries for officers just in the fact that they're lifting, lifting other people. So the option that we have chosen more often than not is to go through the front doors, which again, is a, is a security concern for us as well. We don't know who we're walking into the, the general area before you get to the courtroom. This is open, everybody's been screened. But again, is, is it families of the victim, is it families of the suspect? We don't know what we're walking into. And again, not ideal for the officer, not ideal for the person that's being wheeled into the wheelchair. Last thing that I'll touch on is, is it relates to prisoner safety and officer safety is downstairs in the holding areas, there are no restrooms in the holding cells. So prisoner needs to use the facilities, be it male or female. They have to be escorted out. Now, put yourself in that position as much as we don't want to put ourselves there. You need to be unshackled. Creates a problem for the officers. What is, what is the intent? What is the judge about to sentence them to? We have no idea what's, what those proceedings are, nor should we at that, at that point in time. So we're taking them to the restroom, we're asking them to, please don't do anything. Again, there's, there's in theory, no weapons in there, but what are they going to take? What are they going to use against the officers and that type of thing? It's, it's not uncommon in jail settings, we haven't had it down there fortunately, for them to throw, you know, fecal matter and that type of stuff to the officers. Happens in the jails, there's no reason to think that it wouldn't happen there. So those are some of the security issues and concerns that we have as the police department, especially as it relates to the prisoners, but ultimately it comes back to the officers and their safety and making sure that they go home at the end of the night. And then ultimately for the public in general, and we're up on the main floor. Thank you.
No, no, I think we can.
We could go to the next slide, please. So back one slide, please. Perfect, space assessment. Want to talk a little bit about some of these, some of these ideas you've heard. Adjacencies, secure circulation and things like that. But actually, I think first, Judge, do you want to talk a little bit about the services that are provided at the municipal court?
Sure. And so I'll, I'll start by just touching on a couple of things that, that the chief mentioned. And you'll note, there's a lot of overlap between this idea of adjacencies, security, space constraints. And fundamentally, we're thinking about the building. The courthouse really isn't akin to another regular office building. It's more like something like an airport, a police department, where there's a clear, or there needs to be a clear designation between the front of house and the back of house. And that's for a few reasons, both to create efficiencies, but primarily a, a security issue. And those adjacencies and security issues are even more important when you have a courthouse like ours that has a robust service offering. Within our courthouse, there's employees from four different divisions out of three different departments, probation officers conducting visits, victim advocates meeting with victims, city attorneys meeting with defendants and other attorneys in negotiations. There's hearings occurring, all of this happening at any one given time. And it's important from a functionality or a functional standpoint to have those different events happening at the same time, but also between the people that need to be having those meetings and in the secure areas that need to be secure and in the public areas when they need to be public. And one thing that the. And one thing that the chief mentioned that kind of popped out in my mind was the idea of passing by the office and seeing personal photos and things like that. One of the restraints that we have as a courthouse is limited meeting area. And when I was with the city prosecutor's office, it was the regular practice to bring defendants back into your office because that was the only place to have a meeting. And you had an option. You could either create a sanitary environment that you were working with all the time, or there's the rest of those individuals are seeing your family holiday photos or whatever personal information you have up in your office. And that practice has essentially been phased out over time. And that impacts the customer service that the court's able to provide. Because now there is no private area to have these conversations. The city prosecutors are having important case conversations with people in public, in the hallway, in the front lobby. There's no areas for defendants or parents of juveniles to have private communications. Those are happening in the hallways, which are often crowded with other individuals having the same conversations. And particularly, if you're talking about attorneys and their clients, there's no designated meeting areas, no designated office space where those things can happen. And that's common in modern courthouses. Next to the courtroom, there are designated private areas for those sort of conversations to happen. But more fundamentally, as we're looking at the overall operation of the court, the diagram to the right up there, I think, is helpful. And it depicts the different sort of functional adjacencies that need to be in place for a courthouse to operate efficiently. So for instance, you need the city prosecutor's office to be near victim services so that they can have private, safe conversations with victims and witnesses about their cases. The judge's chambers needs to be close to the clerks because they interact all day long and there's questions going back and forth. The marshals and court security need to be close to the courtrooms and have easy access to the whole building in case they need to respond. And jurors need to be isolated for obvious reasons so they can do their job. But the way the courthouse is currently laid out and the struggles that we looked at with the different renovation options was that either these adjacencies don't exist or in order to create these adjacencies, you create other problems, whether it's security or whatnot. And I think one of the examples in the report showed there was a way within the structure to create a secure hallway for in custody defendants. But that resulted in the judge's chambers being on one side of the building and the clerk's offices being on the other side of the building, needing to cross the public lobby area in order to conduct business. And that was what we were running into as we were looking at these different adjacencies that are needed in a courthouse with those renovation options. It was, you might fix one problem and then you'd find the other that it would create. But in addition to the adjacency issue, there's the space issue. And we've talked about that some already in terms of the lack of meeting area, the space that's needed for those sort of consultations. But also what we mentioned with the lack of restrooms for jurors and for other members of the public that are in the courthouse that need to be able to access secure areas and not necessarily have interaction with other people that are in the courthouse as well. From a, considering our internal customers, the staff and the team that work at the courthouse, they often find themselves at a loss for where to meet. There's really two options. There's the large round room, which is used for the jury assembly area. It's used for advisements. It's used because there is no other private area for people to meet and have these conversations. So if that's not available, the only other location to have meetings on the court side is in jury room B in all reality. And I think we'll get into some of the other adjacencies more broadly, but the issue with jury room B is it's right next to the courtroom. So if you're having a meeting in the jury room, which abuts the courtroom, it's not soundproof and it regularly creates disruptions with the proceedings that are going on. And if we did have a jury, when we do have a jury in there, again, there's no soundproofing. It's right up, abuts the courtroom, and that creates concerns when it comes to making sure the jury is isolated, they're not hearing what's going on in the courtroom, and the outside public doesn't have access to them. The same is true for jury room A. It has two points of access. One is into the rear of the courtroom. The other, it's directly off the main public log. And it's also a room that, because of space issues, the police department uses for fingerprinting. There's some storage in there. And so it's a less than ideal situation, certainly if you're serving on a jury or are needing to use that room for any other purpose. The last thing I'll mention, just because Chris touched on the HVAC and things like that, is I hope it comes across and as a court, we have nothing but praise for our facilities team. They work miracles on that building regularly to keep the HVAC running and all of the other things that come up. But we do have problems because of just the nature of where those units are in their life cycle with HVAC, plumbing. And for our internal team, it can create a situation where the courthouse can in uncomfortable environment, just from a physical standpoint. And so those are just some of the points that I wanted to talk about in regard to space needs and adjacencies. So I don't know, Chris or Wells, do you want to add anything else?
I could add quickly to that. So in an ideal situation, in custody transport would occur back of house, as was described. You did a great job, I think, to sort of defining the space needs, which again, there is the adjacency requirement, but each of those departments that we're talking about, victims advocacy, probation, judges, et cetera, they all have their own sort of programmatic requirements for the space within which they work. So when you think about each of those departments that we're thinking about adjacencies and relationships to one another with, you also need to think about sort of the optimized layout and function of each of those departments. And it's different for probation as it is for victims advocacy. But that starts to create some of these puzzle pieces that then we're trying to organize through adjacencies, as the judge was explaining. But in a perfect world, we would have secure in custody transport where the marshals are safe, the police are safe as they're arriving into a Sallyport that's not visible externally. Doesn't mean it has to be inside, it just means it has to be sort of with, you know, no line of sight from the outside and a direct path into the building that allows them to safely get that in custody defendant into a secure holding cell and then into the courtroom ultimately. So the other aspect of that is wanting the front of house to feel public and welcoming and to be able to facilitate, you know, just a pleasant environment for those services that Judge explained, you know, go beyond just what might be a court proceeding. But back of house, again, it's not obvious, but it's subtly designed where you have secure movement for staff, for jury, for judges, to their chambers, where in custody transport's not actually occurring in the same movement pathways or circulation pathways through the building. And so the last point I would make on that, not to beat a dead horse here, is the limitation of space. And one thing we'll keep probably referring back to are some of the constraints presented by some of the existing structure of the building when you think about those moving parts that I've described before.
Thanks, Wells. If we could go to the next slide, please. And I'll let Wells also talk a bit about.
Sure, I'll hit this one quickly. You know, so again, we're assessing this building. We're looking at the condition of the mechanical systems, the electrical systems, the structural opportunities the building might present or limitations. We're also looking at it from a code standpoint, energy code, and then of course accessibility code. Because of the age of the building, much of the building was built before we had accessibility codes. So all the point is there is that, you know, even if we were just to renovate this building to make it meet current accessibility codes, there's gonna be a lot of impact to existing space as it stands. Because bathroom footprints are gonna have to grow to provide additional spaces required per the current accessibility standards. That has impacts on a situation where we're already limited on space. So we're taking more away to sort of bring the building up to compliance. And there really isn't much in this building that we wouldn't have to touch, not just from an accessibility standpoint, but from a system standpoint, you know? And we'll talk more about this too, but our attitude throughout this process was critically assessing the existing building and saying to ourselves as a design team that involved those different disciplines, what can we reuse here? Like what is ready to contribute to a functioning facility for the next 25-plus years? And when you consider all the deficiencies, the age of the systems, the lack of certain code compliance, that's what drove us to consider an additional alternative in our assessment.
Thank you. Next slide, please.
And so as part of the study, we looked to some of our neighboring jurisdictions just to get a comparison in terms of the status of their court facilities. And this was self-reported information from each of the municipalities listed there that summarized up on the screen. But out of the, just to kind of hit the highlights, out of the 12 front range municipalities that we were able to gather information from, the Westminster Municipal Court structure, the building, was the oldest by between about 11 and 57 years. And many of the buildings that were already newer construction that have the star next to them have had major renovations since the time of their original construction. And to piggyback on what Chris and Wells were talking about in regard to ADA compliance, Westminster was one of three of the 12 municipal courts that were not fully up to ADA standards, again, as reported by those courts. I'll note, Arvada has the orange circle there. They reported that they are fully compliant with the exception of the judge's bench, which still has stairs leading to it. And Wheat Ridge has the orange circle. They didn't have sufficient information to give us a full response. Notably, the other two jurisdictions that are not fully ADA compliant, Brighton and Federal Heights, are both part-time courts that handle limited case types and limited case loads. And so currently Westminster, out of that list, is the only full-time, full-service court that is not fully ADA compliant with the caveat that I mentioned about Arvada and Wheat Ridge. The last point that I'll make, and again, following up on what Wells had mentioned, is that we want the municipal court. We understand people are there for a variety of reasons. But at the end of the day, we're there to provide service to the community. And we want it to be a place where everyone that comes in the doors is able to access the services and feel welcomed. To me, the municipal court is a cornerstone of the community. It's one of the branches of our government. And that the facility should reflect the pride that the community takes and the value that the community has in public safety. And I feel that the recommendations and the work that Wells and everyone has put into it that are being made to city council, I will go a long way towards achieving those goals. So that's all I have on that stuff.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So, as Wells and his team began working on the project that began as just renovation options for the existing building, they came up with three options within, and with some expansion of the existing facility, and began to, as we discussed, programmatically assign spaces within those designs where available. In the study itself, you'll see all three of those. We've pulled out just one of those here as an example. So I want to talk through a little bit of what's on the slide here. Certainly, a major renovation of the existing facility, as we can see as we go through, is a lower initial investment than new construction. And it addresses some of the existing concerns that you've heard this evening. Let me talk about the other side of this. It doesn't address all of the existing concerns. And there's not, there's not these ability to address all of what we have identified tonight just because of the existing structure of the building. So it limits the layout options, and really, we found nothing that meets best practices. Something that's, I think, concerning for all of us is a major renovation would require moving out of this building, which would require this team to establish a temporary courthouse for 12 to 24 months. We've built that in, but we're not sure what that looks like, where that is, what tenant improvement somewhere else looks like. And that's gonna be very difficult to undertake. I would also note this is high risk and high contingency option, and that's why you see a lot of variability in the cost per square foot. And I'd ask Wells to talk a bit about that along with the renovation option.
Sure. So first important distinction here is we didn't, we haven't really gotten into real design. These were studies. These were sort of diagrammatic studies of the existing facility, looking for opportunities as a follow-up to the space needs assessment work that we did, as we've discussed, trying to organize this, these different uses and optimize circulation in the eyes of safety and everything else. But without having real design, we don't have any engineering to size new structural members that would be necessary to transfer openings and precast structure. We don't have specific mechanical systems designed, although we have some narratives to support what might be recommended. You know, electrical engineering, we haven't sized the service that would be required for this building. But within that, best practices have been applied and a third-party cost estimator utilized, one that we have an extensive track record with, to essentially come up with as accurate of a cost per square foot estimate or really an opinion of probable cost at this stage. Because again, you know, we're not doing actual takeoffs of every division of material that would go into building this material. It's based on market conditions, and it's just that. It's an opinion of probable cost, and it really requires a range because there's unknowns. And we don't know what we don't know until we get into this building and we're able to uncover through more investigation, through, you know, get the design going and figure out what it's really gonna take to sort of put this thing back together. So I would just sort of make sure that we all understand that because, you know, again, the estimator tried to go further than just saying, okay, it's X amount of square feet, I'm gonna apply this number to that. They tried to look at the different types of uses and the different variable costs per square foot approximated for those different uses, and they synthesized it that way. But until we actually have physical takeoffs, it's difficult to give, you know, an exact statement of what this would cost. Plus, we have a lot of vulnerability in supply chains and labor, which is obviously affecting costs pretty significantly and on a fairly fast cycle, much more so than we're used to before 2020.
Do you want to talk a bit about codes, building codes?
Yeah, so sure. So again, when we looked at the studies and the alternatives and how we might be able to achieve a layout or diagram that would work, you know, we did continuously ask ourselves, okay, what's here that brings efficiency to reuse? You know, we like existing buildings. Like what, how can we sort of listen to what's here, understand what's here, and use that to our advantage to build new space? Well, there's not a lot we can reuse. Mechanical systems, because of the way the buildings evolved over time and came together, you have a lot of different zones, many of which don't necessarily function or relate to the way they, to each other the way they should. Plus, the existing HVAC system is essentially at the end of its usable life, including ductwork. There are two newer boilers in the building, but with that exception, really, distribution, everything. You know, ducts are good for 30 to maybe 50 years, depending on who you ask. Well, we're at 50 years on those ducts. The electrical service to the building. You know, there's recommendations in our electrical engineers' report that cites some deficiencies in the existing systems, some safety issues in the existing electrical systems, much of which is original to the 50-year-old structure. So there's not any electrical we can really re-save. It's kind of, or save. It's sort of new systems there. It needs a new roof, right? We're at the end of that usable life. Then there's the codes. Then there's energy codes. And we have to consider the envelope and the efficiency, the operational efficiency of this building and the loads this building will have. So even of the few existing walls that we were trying to use to our advantage and find some efficiency in a renovation scenario, those walls are gonna need to be retrofitted to meet current energy codes. And these are solid concrete walls with very little to no R-value, so we're supplementing with additional insulation versus building a new. So we're supplementing with additional insulation, uh, versus building a new optimized wall that would help us achieve a better performance and long-term operational costs for this building.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Wells, you want to talk about how we got to looking at new construction?
Sure, sure. So, yeah, no, I, I think that's a good point. I appreciate the opportunity, Chris. So we've cited our 2016 report that we did. The charge back then was different. It, it was through the lens of a new facility and we evaluated some different sites. This, the, the existing municipal court site being one. And that, that rose to the top because it afforded an opportunity, and this again was a study in 2016, to maintain operations in the existing building. And, and we, we actually have experience doing this in, in, uh, uh, one other project specifically, but we see this a lot. We had the opportunity, we recognized with the site that we have here, to at least consider building new on this site without interruption to the current operations in the court. You could, you know, working with a general contractor, we could identify certain, uh, areas of use on the site designated for construction operations to keep the public safe and to keep access to the building maintained, uh, during construction while perhaps a new building is constructed adjacent in the parking lot. Uh, upon completion of that building, there would be a transition into the new building, a little bit of downtime. Uh, and then the existing building would be, or could be raised with new parking infrastructure, then built relatively quickly on the footprint of the existing building. All the while, trying to maintain, uh, some existing temporary staff and, uh, uh, transport parking, separate from public parking, separate from construction activity, uh, space needs. And there's a, there's a lot of efficiency in that when you think about soft costs versus hard costs. Hard costs just being the, the cost of construction to build a new building, basically what you would be paying a general contractor to do this project. Soft costs, those are things that we need to consider that make up the total expense of the project. Land acquisition, in this case, that would be covered. Engineering, uh, investigation, geotechnical survey, um, design engine, design and engineering fees, uh, materials testing during construction. But also a temporary move and relocation, uh, would be part of that discussion as well. And so that's kind of the bigger picture too, where, uh, again, we're looking for these efficiencies. We're looking for what the existing building can give us and how it can save us some money. But when you consider all these different things, we recognized that it would be our responsibility, frankly, trying to give a deliverable here that allowed the city to have information to at least make the next decision for the next step, to revert back to the 2016 report and draw upon the experience and the lesson learned there, where, and, and just to evaluate that in the context of a, a renovation or remodel scenario. Uh, so, so we basically just drew up old data and brought it and incorporated it in. And we renewed or updated the, the cost estimating for that scenario, along with the estimates we prepared for the other three scenarios, uh, which again, were, were just diagrammatic studies of how we might be able to get the different uses of this building organized appropriately, uh, for a 25-year-plus building. So that's sort of how it evolved.
Thank you. Um, so first off, let me give a word of caution here. The, the boxes that are on here are very approximate. Um, it's the, these are the items that would be, um, identified in, in, uh, full design of any new facility. Uh, the red is intended to show where parking, uh, could be. But again, that would be decided in, uh, during final design. Certainly a purpose-built courthouse, um, that's made to last for 50-plus years, would be of much greater, uh, value to the city, um, we believe, than investing in the existing facility. It will be designed from the ground up with, um, ADA, security adjacencies, all of those taken, um, into account, um, along with, uh, systems, modern systems, building codes, energy codes, um, that will help ensure that this would have, um, another 60-plus years, uh, lifespan, like the existing facility. Wells mentioned, uh, this is an option that would allow the existing courthouse to function, uh, and operate, uh, during construction. And this is also an opportunity to provide, uh, a multi-use civic building, um, in the area. Other uses could be incorporated certainly into, into any facility. Uh, we identify that this is, this is a, a larger, um, initial investment. But we think that this option, um, is a better step forward, especially compared with the cost of looking at, um, a significant renovation of the existing facility.
The only thing I would say is we don't know what we don't know about what other challenges the existing building would present. But, uh, trying to reuse, in our opinion, does present some additional risk. And that's why we had recommended a higher contingency, actually, um, in some of these numbers that, that have been included. For example, again, just the last thing I'll say on that is, you know, what can we reuse? Some exterior walls, we have settling, uh, slabs, you know, do we reuse that or not? It would seem that with all the plumbing reconfiguration, you've got to take those slabs out anyway. But we would be relying on, on some existing infrastructure. Whereas with a new construction, you would have the ability to do all the testing and assessment work upfront. And it really, to a large degree, mitigates a lot of the risk that a renovation on this scale we think would present.
I would just add, from a service standpoint, we talked a lot about what it would involve to move the court into potentially another building for, or buildings for up to two years while there were renovations ongoing, depending on the risks and how long that process took. And I've thought long and hard about what that would look like. And if we, one, be able to find a facility that would match our needs. Because, um, quite frankly, whether it, we're operating for a day or two years, the facility needs to have the security, um, uh, expectations of, of a courthouse. It needs to have the ability to move, um, defendants who may be in custody safely. It needs to have the adjacencies so that, um, the, the different departments can work together in terms of how, uh, that might look. And from a public service standpoint, are, are we in a situation where potentially we're holding court a couple of days a week in one location, a couple of days a week in another location? Or do we have a, a separate, uh, area or a separate building that's being, um, rented or used by the city that the public will need to go to? And just trying to conceptualize what that would look like, along with the, the costs from the court's perspective, is a significant drawback to, um, a renovation versus being able to continue our operations, transfer maybe over the course of a week into a, a new building and maintain that consistency and safety.
Thank you. We can go to the next slide, please. Um, so a recommendation here is, is, uh, for you to direct staff, uh, this evening to, um, to design a new municipal court, do full design on a new municipal court building. And, uh, to return with a financing strategy. That design, um, identified in the memo, have, uh, funds available to do full design, um, on a project. So with the go-ahead, that's something we would like to, uh, execute an RFP on, um, and begin doing design. And then certainly the funding of construction is the next question. And directing us to return with a financing strategy, which I think, uh, Mayor would like to provide some input on.
Thank you, Chris, and thanks to the whole team. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, Portem and Councilors. Uh, if it's your direction, our financial team, uh, would like to return with a holistic approach to financing this project for you next quarter. Uh, we will, of course, examine, uh, cash on hand, pay-as-you-go financing. It is the year-end here for 2022, just 12 days of shopping left till the holiday. Uh, but this project will involve debt. There's no doubt about that. And we will perform an analysis that brings to you choices and a menu of options. Of course, uh, first, uh, we want to get your direction beyond doing nothing or, uh, staying pat with the existing, uh, facility, as you've heard. So I want to thank, uh, the entire team and, uh, we would be prepared to bring to you again next quarter. Again, our recommendation for how to proceed in the most efficient manner to finance this project, uh, and give you choices. Thank you. So with that, Mayor, I think this concludes our, our presentation from the team. Thank you.
Thank you. They're asking for a recommendation to build a new facility? Thoughts? I was ready, I was ready a half an hour ago to just say yes. But in 2013, this was needed. I'm sorry it's taken nine years to get here. I'll be your best cheerleader. So I'm a yes. Go do it. And if you can get it done quicker than a quarter, get it over here.
I am a yes as well. I'm excited to see, uh, the renovation, or actually this new building occur. Um, and you actually have a safe place to work and bring people into. I would just ask that when you bring back the financing plan, I, I still would love to see overall what our facilities, um, improvement and maintenance plan is and how this fits into that. So if we're putting the money aside to do this, are there any other facilities that are in need of maintenance or improvements that we're going to have to put off? Or how are we, again, it's that question that you asked me?
Um, I have a couple of things that I want to see in the overall plan. I, I am in favor of this. I mean, this has been talked about for some time. I would make the point, just because I didn't really hear it. When I think customer service, I think it's important that the public knows that this is about also access to safe justice. And, um, some of those challenges around, um, people being able to access justice in Westminster, um, in a, in a safe, um, private setting, I think is really important. And I know being the courthouse, that's not always the case. Or I don't know how rarely are always, but I know in some of my experiences, it wasn't. So, um, I think that, and I know also that you're doing the best you can, but I think that's really an important piece of it because we, um, do owe that to the taxpayers and, in our system of government. Um, a couple of things that I would like to understand, you know, as you come back and look at design, you had up there 50-plus years, we're at 60-plus, and that wasn't a purpose-built building. So however, you know, in modern, um, ideas, we can understand how that can be extended. But also that our planning, um, looks beyond that 50 years. What does, uh, what do we do at that 50 years? I know that that's becoming a reoccurring theme as we look at things such as water plant and anything else. So I would want our plan to include what's, what's next. I also want to understand exactly how you're looking at other purposes. Um, I think I brought this up when we did the tour, as far as, does that mean potentially a substation for the police department? Or, you know, what are those other uses that make sense? So that we're being forward-thinking and, and, uh, really thinking about what opportunities we have for purpose-built services. And then the last thing that I'm curious about is like a, a full, when you talk about budget, when I think about the court, we're talking about the building right now. But there's so many other things that are going to have to go into this, whether you rebuilt or repurposed what we had, or built a new building, just because a lot of practices have changed, such as tech, the technology. So, um, when I think about, you know, modern AV systems and how we're delivering justice, um, that's got to be part of it, if it's really purpose-built and we're not just taking, you know, stuff from one building and put it in another, because that's not really, you know, purposeful. So I want to understand and make sure that we're thinking about that full scope of budget that it's going to take to actually put people in the new courthouse and, and deliver our services.
So Baker?
Well, I look forward to questions. Why wasn't this brought, you know, forward in really 2016? Know that you're at a disadvantage, but we have several people at the table who are not.
Respond to that 2016?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't find it financially feasible at the time. There were a lot of, uh, a lot of obstacles to address, um, at that time. That's really, uh, a big part of what held us back. Uh, we also had a number of options as to potential locations. Just from my perspective, the more options, the more discussions, the easier it was to delay a decision.
So, uh, what has changed between now and six years ago?
So I think first and foremost, the hiring of a chief financial officer has allowed us to look at the city's finances from a higher level perspective, rather than just a year-to-year or biennial budget. I think that's the biggest one. The second would be this team has settled on this location at the municipal court site is the best option, especially the best option to move this forward. I think those are the, those are the two big highlights I would, I would have. And this really came up as we went through, as we went through the study. You know, that option onsite, um, it really, it really stuck out.
If you don't, don't mind, just because it's because I was here through at least some of those. I mean, because this has been talked about again since prior to, um, even you being elected, but I know when the mayor was here. And I know that some of those location discussions even were happening with council, like we had the idea like repurposing a potential building in the city. And I know that, um, multiple different staffs that aren't here anymore, because I know I had conversation with John Hall that used to be here, um, and a couple of other people. So I, you know, I've seen some of that too, whatever it's worth, that, you know, that, that process was ongoing since 16.
So what's our, what's our best guess about how long this building will last? I think even if we acted immediately, we're talking at a four-year lifespan, aren't we? Before the new courthouse is online.
How long the current building would last?
Yeah, how long, because you say it has some, some concerns about the HVAC. We don't know exactly what you meant by the electrical component of it. And the ADA, we seem to have been grandfathered in uncertain things, even though they present an operational obstacle.
Right. Do you want to talk about the, the current facility?
From yourselves, facilities manager, thank you. I would say we can get at least five more years out of where we are. When I, when I approached my leadership before this in 2021, asking for the money to do this study, there was a horizon in mind. It wasn't an urgent thing of next year or the year after. It was, hey, we really need to think about this and put this together and quantify our needs in that building. And that's when we hired Anderson Hellas to look at those options. I'd ask Wells if, if I, in their investigation, from my opinion, they can last. You did a deeper dive than we did, but I think they can last through the construction of this building.
Yeah, and I would, I, I think you know, the day-to-day on the systems, our team evaluated it from, um, you know, again, from a critical perspective, engineer, electrical engineer came and assessed and toured the building and looked at different panels, capacity, distribution. And it's in, I believe it's in the appendix of our summary of this report, uh, specifically for each of the different disciplines. Based on an average life expectancy of mechanical systems, you know, we're, we're over the expected life of some and nearing the expected life end of others. Again, there's, uh, specific notes in there about certain things electrically, uh, about the distribution system, existing panels and other things that are of concern. Again, a lot of that electrical was identified to be original to, you know, the, uh, I think the 19, uh, at least 70 era. So, um, things even like ductwork, again, exceeded their natural life. So these are, these are best practices and standards, uh, based on the equipment that's there. But is it all going to fall apart in the next two weeks at the same time? Probably not. I mean, it has been maintained well. It's operating well. But, uh, you know, there are a lot of other questions, I would argue, on top of that, just in terms of operational efficiency and cost to just keep the building functioning and what that might look like, you know, over those next five years versus what it would look like with a new, you know, energy-efficient facility and the cost to operate and maintain that building for the next 50-plus years. It'd be an interesting study.
We have added an ADA left for critical operations or the barrier to entry. That's an investment we made this year in recognizing that was a true barrier for equity and the accessibility of the building. We're continuing to make sure it's meeting the current needs. But to make the next leap, we need to invest a lot of money, which will trigger a lot of code issues and energy issues that, uh, make this cost go.
Thank you. Uh, the next question is how many customers do we serve? How many, how, how many staff do we have working there?
In terms of staff, Chris, do you know the exact number off the top of your head? In terms of customers coming in, I believe to date, we're somewhere around 8,000, uh, individuals have come into the courthouse, uh, this year. And in terms of total number of staff, 30 to 40 staff members.
Okay. Uh, and that includes probation and prosecutors and room for our, uh, public defenders and all that?
Victims' advocates. Yes, sir.
Okay, so a total of about 40 staff?
30 to 40.
And how many times do we have jury trials?
We've had, how many jury trials do we know this year? Yeah, I believe we've had around three or four. Yeah, I believe we've had around three or four jury trials this year. And there's been other days where juries have been called in, but for whatever reason, on the morning of trial, the trial doesn't go.
Council Baker, Brian Chisley, lead prosecutor for the city. As far as the jury trials go, thank you. We've had three or four post-pandemic, which is not a representative number of how many we're having pre-pandemic. We're having lots more jury trials pre-pandemic. I think the reasons why there may be fewer now are pretty complicated. But I think with police department staffing increasing, hopefully over the next few years, with other factors returning to a more normal state, I think we'd expect far more than three or four jury trials over a one-year period. We'd probably be looking at more like, I'm just guessing, something like 20 to 24 jury trials in a normal year.
So, so like a jury trial every other week?
Yes.
And then in any kind of prosecutorial things, there's all signs of games being played with defense attorneys and all that. So really, we'd have to schedule up like one and a half a week?
Well, I mean, in, in any normal week, I think this week, our jury status conferences, this morning, we have four or five jury status conferences. So we're kind of preparing for the possibility every week of doing two simultaneous jury trials. Now, it doesn't often happen these days, but on any particular week, it could, depending on, and whether or not that happens is only partially within the control of the city. In fact, if, if we show up and two defendants say, I want my trial, they get their trial and there's nothing anybody can do about that. So even though we're only having, we've only had four jury trials post-pandemic, at any given week, we could have two simultaneous jury trials where we're bringing in, I think, 80 or 100 jurors into the building to provide for two different jury pools for those two trials.
Right. Okay. And of those 8,000 really defendants, we have report to court. Really, of the 95% of them are plea bargained?
So I, just to be clear, 8,000 individuals have come into the courthouse, not all of which are, not all of whom are defendants. So there may be family members, two thousand, their parents, things like that. In terms of plea bargains, I don't, that's probably a fair assessment.
So really, how many defendants do we have coming?
Individual defendants? Well, our caseload, Brian, do you have the, the number?
Brian Pogan Klassen, interim court administrator. Total caseload through November of this year has been 4,698 cases filed with the court.
And how many of those were really traffic?
Traffic cases, 4,161.
So there were like 500 other cases and the other 4,100 were all traffic?
And I apologize, my spreadsheet is not adding correctly. We've got 4,161 traffic cases, 1,361 criminal cases. So, yeah, I could do the quick, so 5,400, 5,500 cases thus far.
And then of the, on the traffic cases, probably 96% are paid a fine and go. How many of those go to jury trial?
Of, of those, there's 1,595 payable traffic tickets.
And Council Baker, for the traffic tickets, the majority of those are traffic infractions. And so if they do go to trial, it's a trial to the court. We have those more regularly. I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we have those more regularly than we have jury trials. It's rare, the only time that you would have a jury trial for a traffic violation would be if it was a criminal traffic violation. So reckless driving, speeding, 40 or more of the limit, things like that. But traffic infractions are court trials, we don't call them jury.
And, well, I, that was one of my next questions I was getting to. We only do in really fractions and misdemeanors here, correct?
For two categories. So on the traffic side of things, we have traffic infractions, which are up to a $500 fine. They're civil. We also have traffic misdemeanors, which can be penalized with a jail sanction. And then we have municipal ordinance violations, which are the equivalent essentially of a state misdemeanor. They have similar maximum penalties.
I thought they were infractions.
So they're municipal ordinance violations, but they are punishable by up to 364 days in jail or up to.
Oh, so they do have a jail component to them?
Yes. So any, any criminal violation of the code. Yes, they're, the municipal ordinance violations, the criminal municipal ordinance violations are essentially equivalent to a state court misdemeanor.
And if we handled the way we enforce the law differently, would that have a really significant impact on the court and the number of really defendants who come?
In what way, Council Baker?
Well, it's my understanding right now that on a domestic violence charge, okay, we're following the VAWA guidelines and somebody has to go to jail, okay? But they can be charged either in district court or in city court.
The, correct. If someone, if probable, if, excuse me, if there is probable cause for a domestic violence incident, if officers arrived, it's mandatory arrest if the officers believe there's probable cause for a domestic violence incident. And then that is correct. If it was a felony-level offense, it could be filed in district court. If it was a misdemeanor-level offense, those are filed in county court. They're also filed in the municipal court. And it's been the practice through our fast-track domestic violence program in Westminster that those misdemeanor-level domestic violence offenses are filed in, in the municipal court.
Do we, do we see this changing?
I, I do not. That, that's been the practice in the city for decades, as far as, as I understand it. It's not a, I think, as a city and as a court, we do an outstanding job handling those matters. And there's built-in service to the community, but also our internal stakeholders, like the police department. So benefits of having those cases filed here for victims. They don't need to travel to Brighton or Golden to have their cases adjudicated. We have in-house victim services and the officers themselves don't need to travel to Brighton or Golden in order to be present on, on those cases. So, and just from a public safety and service standpoint, those are cases that get a lot of attention in our court because it's a focus. I can't say that, in my experience, it's always been the same for the types of cases that we handle in state court, in state courts. It would be my recommendation and in strong position that we maintain those cases in the city. Ultimately, I think that decision would be outside of my purview ultimately, if there, if there were a change there. But for those, those are the reasons I, I would foresee it and hope that it stays with the city.
Is there any other way to reduce, well, the number of in, in, in really custody persons? Because as I see it, the only kind of in custody persons we could possibly have in our court are really domestic violence and failure to appear.
That is, that is true. That, that's, that's the majority of individuals that we see. Some may not be held on our charges, but are in custody because they're being held on charges, say, out of Adams County. So they might have either a personal recognizance bond in our case or they're on summons in our case, but they have, say, a pending felony matter. So they're in custody in Adams County. There's nothing we can, we can really do about those. Throughout COVID and generally with some of the state legislature, state laws that have passed, there's been a shift in terms of the number of in-custodies that we've seen. Laws passed requiring mandatory personal recognizance bonds in some situations, based off of the level of offense. And so we, we've seen a reduction in the number of in-custodies. I don't know that there is another viable way to reduce the number of in-custodies that wouldn't impact the effectiveness of the court in terms of mandatory arrests for domestic violence, issuing a warrants upon failures to appear, things of that nature.
And there isn't any way to kick, I mean, a failure to appear warrant to a higher court, is there? I mean, we have to enforce our own laws.
Correct. So.
So if it's failure to appear in our court, that's our, that's our problem?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Go ahead, jump in.
I was wondering if we could take a break?
Oh, sure. Take five minutes.
Ready to wrap up?
What were the other sites and why were they abandoned?
The other sites that were looked at in the 2016 study included locating a new construction courthouse on the downtown site. It included a piece of property adjacent to City Hall. The existing site, which is the option that's included. Additional, yes, a building here on the City Hall campus that would require a parking garage structure as well.
So all those sites would be, I mean, significantly more expensive?
Correct.
Gotcha. And where would we hold a temporary court for two years? Or was this even, it's just something we'd have to do? And if we wanted to choose that path, we'd have to invest.
We haven't figured that out yet.
I'm for building a new courthouse.
Thank you. Council Emmens?
Well, I hope I prepped you in the tour for some of the questions that would come forward because these are the questions that I asked you all. What, Council Baker, how many people come through the courthouse annually? Like, are we prepared with, with potential growth? I mean, growth of a city comes growth of crime, unfortunately. You know, what are all those? I would like to see that when details come back to councils, what I'm saying. But those are questions that I had asked. I'm familiar with, talking about the ADA piece, I'm familiar when it comes to the transportation sector. Grandfathered in to a certain extent, but once you touch it, it becomes un-grandfathered. Is that the case with municipal facilities where if you make an adjustment, it's no longer grandfathered into an ADA compliant system?
Yes, and it's based on scale to a degree. So the amount of alteration that the building might see triggers a certain amount of compliance. So there's a number of different ways to answer that question. Essentially, yes. There, I mean, I'll stop there, but again, it can be scaled, but, but essentially, yes.
Okay. And then I'm assuming fines in non-compliance could be pretty hefty, potentially even lawsuits if we're not in compliance, that I'm looking more towards the legal fed.
We, we could certainly consult with SIRSA and explore their experience. But yeah, I would, I would imagine claims against the city would be a possibility if we did touch a building to a degree that renovation mandated ADA upgrades and failed to perform the ADA upgrades. Yeah.
And all, with all the details out on the table of what we have, I'm. And all, with all the details out on the table of what we have, I'm comfortable with moving forward with a new facility.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes. And I think not just, not just from, just a pure security side, although that's critically important, is that I think our staff that works there, I've had the opportunity to be behind the scenes several times, and I, I, I think they, they do a tremendous job under interesting circumstances, and I think they're owed more than that. So I mean, yes.
Councilor Duddy?
Yes, and I would really, really love to see those next steps on the water treatment plant costs. I think that's critical when we approve this, that we should definitely know that, because that's been a year now. But yes, for this, for sure.
And then I'll go back one more time. Are you okay with directing staff for a financial plan for the first quarter?
Yes.
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 Tour? Yes.
Yes, plus what I said before. Yes. You're hitting a thousand today.
We appreciate it.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you all. Probably twelve more days left.
Keep the shopping.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
All the questions.
Meeting for, post-meeting is done at 8:57, and we'll be going into executive session as soon as the room clears. Night, Chief.